We already have.
We want to hire tech immediately.
Oh, I was using that door.
Yeah, she's right here.
Thank you. How's Cam? Good. Um, I don't see how far it's going to be off the range.
So I've been in rents, I just got back from a rent sale a couple hours ago. It's still like a man person to get here, so I've been getting this too. So, I think I just had a flower on my table. I need to get this. It is, it is, yeah.
What do you need, Carolyn? Just to separate this, I'm good to go.
If you need something, let me know. I'm gonna mill, I'm not gonna sit down, I'm gonna mill around. Sir, wait.
Are you the guy that comes and videotapes every?
I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. That's the reason why I do it. They've all got setups going on. Yeah, little media group.
Good job, guys.
No, you're fine. If you need, I can always put these on the YouTube channel too. I have a YouTube channel just specifically for the meetings. I'm the guy that streams it all the time to like Facebook or iTunes. Then I just take that stream video and put it right up to YouTube. Tyler, Jack.
That's right. Did you get one? You gotta fix.
She does. Oh, yeah.
She tells me you do a lot of stuff with her too, so, thank you.
I try to do all the behind the scenes, media, images.
I just talked to the attorney. They said they do not know any meetings that's going back to right now, you know? I just talked to the attorney here. He says the council meeting is not meeting back to right now. We know they are. Thank you.
Ken?
Gern.
Thank you. I know, Ken. It's me, Gabe.
Huh?
It's me, Gabe. Nice to see you again.
Oh, yeah.
Once again for coming. You admired me.
The council meeting back to right now? In the meeting? You know, he told me, the attorney just told me that they're not back. And I asked him if he would put it on tape. He won't do it.
All right. So you know what's going on.
I just wanted to see if they were all together.
I tried to get away from there. Man, let me help.
Here, let me, let me stand right here and make sure you can.
Can I move over just a little bit more without getting in your hair? There we go. Now we're fine. I am, I probably won't get these people over here.
My name is Kyler.
Ken Gern.
Ken, pleasure to meet you.
I don't wanna be the first one.
No, you can sign it when you get out there. Yeah, I just didn't know.
Is YouTube video for this?
Yeah, I actually stream it live for all the people that can't be here.
I, uh, I do that in front of town.
Oh, okay. I work in front of you.
See? Where?
Uh, Bob's. Uh, Sheldon Five.
Yeah, I do the township video.
Oh, okay.
They give me a big, big camera. It took me a year or an hour.
It's comfortable. Yeah.
Your heavenly father, help us to make decisions that are fair and just in the best interests of our city, our residents, and our businesses. Help us to understand the issues so that we are able to make good decisions. Amen.
Amen.
Ashley?
Here.
Ambrose?
Here.
Tisanto?
Here.
La? Derek? Luflin?
Here.
Osneck? Bob Rushness?
Here.
Ed, like your motion, please, to excuse help remember rules, yeah?
I'll support.
Motion support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on. The first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation by the 52nd First Division Traditional Introduction.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Sorry to crash your party. Good evening, council members and Mayor Ashley. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Judge David Law from your local district court, and I'm here with Judge Travis Reeds. And I think we were last year, maybe about two years ago, and the purpose of tonight, we wanted to come back and just talk a little bit about what the court does and how we do it. It's an opportunity for us to also be able to get back involved and stay involved, hopefully, in the community as part of the way to stay connected. So I realize you have a lot of people here tonight that don't necessarily need to hear judges speak all night, so we're gonna do our best to really keep it condensed. First off, I wanted to thank Judge Reeds for coming here tonight. Judge Bondi was hoping to be here tonight too. He had a family obligation, so he couldn't make it, but first I wanted to thank Judge Reeds because it's really nice to have other people in the courthouse that you get along with, that you're friends with, that you respect the job they do. I feel that way about him. So I appreciate him tagging along tonight and presenting with me.
You're okay.
Yeah, thanks. I was hoping with that, he'd buy me dinner after this, but, second of all, I do wanna mention the communities that our court handles. So obviously Walt Lake, Wexum, Novi, South Lyon, Lyon Township, Milford, the Village and the Township, Highland Township Commerce, and Wolverine Lake. So I think those are the areas that we encompass. Anything that handle, that takes place in those areas, at least will come through our court. Criminalize, for sure, felonies and misdemeanors. We're here to talk a little bit about what we do and how we do it. If anybody has any questions at the end, our intent was to take questions. I don't know if tonight, that's really an option, but I'll throw that out there. Anybody in the audience or council member has a question, okay? At this point, I'm gonna, oh, before I do that, I do wanna thank Van Benarian. We see him every Tuesday. He's out there working hard for Walt Lake. He does a good job. Very good job, I should say, and represents the city extremely well, so I wanna make sure I pointed that out too before I turn it over to Judge Reeds. Thank you.
All right, so knowing that we were here a couple of years ago, I won't belabor some of the same issues over much, but I wanna just talk about some of the basics. So as some of you are aware, and hopefully you remember a little bit about what we said last time, the district court, which is commonly referred to as the people's court, is the place where most people who end up having something like a civil infraction, a speeding ticket or something like that, they think of the district court as their court. It's the busiest court in the state, and the 52nd District Court, the court where we serve, is one of the busiest in Michigan. We handle about 50,000 cases a year, and we do everything from small claims to murder. All the cases in any court in Michigan start in the district court. Some of them finish in the district court, like small claims cases and misdemeanor cases, and more serious cases like felonies start in the district court, and then most of the time they'll proceed up into the county court in Pontiac, the circuit court. And we have four divisions with 67 employees. We run a pretty well-oiled machine, I think. We have a civil division, a criminal division, we have a traffic division, and a probation department. And all four of those divisions work well together. They work very harmoniously to try to take care of the people's business, to make sure that the litigants, the people that come to court, whether they're a witness, or they're defendant, or they're plaintiff in a civil case, they can access the court, handle their business in a timely manner, and they're not wasting their time and feeling like they can't get their business handled, and have someone listen to them. Walt Lake is one of the jurisdictions we handle on Tuesday, so you could've seen us in action had you come in a little early. You've seen Mr. Benarian there working. And you're welcome to come. We welcome everyone to come in. This is your court. If you wanna see Walt Lake business handled, come in on any Tuesday, and we'll have coffee ready for you. So.
Judge Reeds will have coffee ready.
He's not much of a coffee guy. We do our felonies on Wednesday, so that's kind of an exciting time at the courthouse. That's a very busy day. All the jurisdictions process their felonies for all of the municipalities that Judge Long talked about, not just Walt Lake on Wednesday, so it's a very busy day. We do most of our trials on Thursdays and Fridays, so if you wanna see a jury trial or bench trial, those are the good days to come in and watch. And one of the things that we wanted to update you about is some of the exciting work we're doing with our specialty courts. And for those of you that don't know, a specialty court is a targeted, intensive probationary program to deal with a person who's coming in as a recidivist or a multiple offender, and they need particular help or particular tools to try to get their life back on track. So we have a court that's primarily devoted to people with alcohol abuse problems. It's called a sobriety court. And a lot of times people will come in on drunk driving cases, multiple offenders, and we will meet with them two or three times a month as the judge. Our probation staff will meet with them weekly, sometimes multiple times a week. We'll have them go into 12-step meetings and all these various different counseling programs to try to help them get the tools to get their life on track. We have an opiate court or a drug court to try to combat the opiate addiction that is sweeping our country. And believe it or not, there are significant differences between the tools that help people with alcohol abuse problems and the people that have drug addiction problems. We also have what we call our community advocacy court. A lot of the people that we see suffer from mental health problems. Mental illness is rampant in the criminal courts, and we have developed a criminal, I'm sorry, a community advocacy court to try to help those people get the type of help they need to get their lives under control. And the last specialty court we have is our veterans treatment court. Judge Long and I are very proud of this court. We've done some significant changes in the last couple of years to the program. Our veterans come back oftentimes from their service, and they bring with them problems that they never thought they would. They could be physical problems, they could be mental problems, they could be PTSD. All these various different issues that are at the core, what brought them to us in the court system, we wanna try to help those veterans get their lives under control, get them access to veterans' benefits and other things. And we're very proud of that, and we have added some programs to help them keep their criminal record clean. It's very difficult for a veteran to get employment with a criminal record, and our veterans court works well with Mr. Benarian and the other municipal attorneys to try to assist our veterans, if they're successful, to keep their record clean. So with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Judge Long to finish up here.
And I'm gonna second what Judge Reeds, the most, I would say, the most satisfying thing that we as judges do is participate in those programs, the sobriety court, vet court. We all have issues. Some people need a little more help with it, and that's what those programs are for. So we're proud to be able to participate in those. I get asked quite often, what, how does a judge sentence somebody? How do you determine how you're gonna sentence somebody? Real quick, typically, on a typical matter, somebody will come in and, let's say, on a drunk driving case or an assault case, I'll refer that person to the probation department that we interviewed by a probation officer. A report gets generated that's gonna tell me everything about them. Anything relevant? Sometimes a little not-too-relevant in there. Anything about them, and I'll read it, review it, obviously, before sentencing. And that'll kinda guide me. What issues do I need to attack as part of the sentence with this person? If there's not an alcohol issue or not a drug issue there, that's not something I'm gonna focus my sentencing. Let me finish, and then I'm gonna get to you, all right? I won't forget you. Right, yellow, I got it. So, so that'll guide me where I go with part of the sentencing. Our typical, a typical case, the way it goes is an arraignment. Somebody comes in, finds out what the charges are that are being brought against them, go to a pre-trial stage where they enter a plea maybe, or decide they wanna have a trial. Later on, can have a jury or bench trial, and then if they are convicted or entered a plea of guilty, they'll end up in that sentencing phase before the judge. Couple of things I wanted to also mention before I end and take a question. Satisfaction surveys. Every couple of years, the court will give out surveys to people coming into the court, using the court for a variety of reasons, and obviously, it's not always easy to get good responses, good marks on those satisfaction surveys. A lot of people aren't thrilled coming to court, I get it, but we're very proud the fact that we've done, our court has done tremendously well over the last five to 10 years with those satisfaction surveys. The numbers are continually going up. We're well above the state average for courts in time spent on cases, satisfaction of people leaving court, feeling they were hurt and everything along those lines. Results just came out recently, and we're proud that we did very well as a court with that. Lastly, community involvement, things like this. We, the three judges on the bench are extremely proud of the fact and willing to get involved in the community. If you have an issue you want the judges to come in and speak about, either before city council, we speak before youth assistance programs. Judge Reeds and I just recently participated in a teen court program, participated in a teen court program at Gaiso Middle School, where we brought actual cases from our court dockets before the kids there, either had pre-trials in front of them or did sentencings in front of them so they can see what an actual courtroom looks like. And it's always good to have a young person see what the ramifications of a decision or choice they might make, what those ramifications could be, right? And you're having a judge bowl in their life. So we're proud to do those types of things. Teen court, we also do, and speaking before all sorts of groups, including Families Against Narcotics, so.
Judge Long, can I jump back in? I forgot to mention, Judge Long thanked and recognized Mr. Benarian because he's a good partner at the courthouse and represents the city so well. I'd like to thank the chief. Walt Lake has an excellent police department, and it's a classic example of effective community policing. In other words, Walt Lake is one of the safest communities in the 521, and I think in large part that's due to the chief and his efforts. So we appreciate working with him, and he's definitely an asset to the community.
And we appreciate the officers. I think I was done with what I was gonna talk about, sir?
Equity, isn't it the only thing that brings you into court?
What's that?
Cases of equity, damages to kids' personal and individual property. That's the only time you can take a person to court.
We have a few more people coming in for more than just that. But, I appreciate it. Anything else?
I do have to make a comment.
Sure.
I was a witness a couple times in your courtroom, and I have to say, I have never seen anybody treat, no matter who was on trial, with respect than you. You weren't degrading to them. You treated them, you know, like they were.
I appreciate that, thank you.
But you dealt with it very well. I was really impressed.
Well, look, everybody that comes before the court, A, we're all human, and B, not every, some people have no criminal record, some people have made one for a choice. Some people have a horrible record. I'm gonna treat particularly with sentencings.
Right.
All those differently.
Even your demeanor toward them was commendable.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You did not treat them poorly.
Thank you, thanks.
Anyone else have a question, or judges? I guess you're finished. We wanna thank you for coming again. I think this is very good.
Thank you. We kept it quick.
We're trying to speed it up, so.
Looks like you have other things to do.
You didn't know you were gonna have quite a bigger.
No, we didn't.
You did, but that's always good.
Thank you for.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, are there any requests for agenda changes this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one. If we could add it under new business, number six, a discussion on 1275 East West Maple Road, the farmer and marketer field, right next to City Hall. Road, the farmer and marketer field right next to City Hall.
So you want to discuss the field?
Yes, I wanted to discuss that particular piece of property that the city owns.
Is there anyone else? Is it staff? Nothing? Okay. Alrighty, moving on. Approval of the minutes from the May 21st, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Support. Is there any discussion on the notes?
I have one, Madam Mayor. The minutes, I feel again, there are significant additions to the minutes, they don't fully capture for the record the full events of the previous council meeting. Specific comments are noted in the minutes while others are omitted from the record. As I've stated previously, you either put everything in the record or make the minutes completely obtuse, but to do parts of what is up in the discussion, I do not think is fully capturing the record. For example, what's omitted from the record are multiple personal affronts that resulted in multiple points of order being made, none of that is noted in the record and it is too much to list to add to the minutes at this point.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Costanzo?
No.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Neckley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried, five to one. Audience participation. Remember that, I don't think we need to read it, you have three minutes, you need to sign in, state your name and your address. So...
You guys.
The man who requested the windows to be opened, true.
Evening council, my name is Kyler Pelmick, I reside at 1428 North Pontiac Trail. I would just like to ask again, since especially we have considerably more people, comments may possibly be made, other noise, other noise may be a little bit of a harder hearing for people that are in the audience, especially even for myself and Mayor Ackley. If we could try a little bit better, especially this time, to make sure we're all talking into the microphones clearly, I appreciate that, thank you.
Nina Potter, 1856 Meadowridge, Wald Lake.
Didn't you sign in?
I will. I attended the May 21st council meeting and was appalled at the behavior of this council to say the least. You should all be ashamed of yourselves in your treating a fellow councilperson. It's your job as councilmembers to help the residents understand who, what, when, where and why you are doing what you do. The residents have trusted you to do what's right and you have repeatedly proven them wrong with your actions, for example, the blatant salaries given to administration. Mr. Costanzo is the only one that has spoken truth to power and does not have a hidden agenda. In fact, if you think your city manager in the course of his contract will probably be paid over a million dollars in a city that's crippled financially, you need to look out for the employees that put their lives on the line for the residents, not the administration. You should be sending planning commissions, zoning board members to classes offered by the state. This is the city's obligation to those board members to help aid in understanding the laws and how to approach the changes coming to the city. They should be looking to the state for infrastructure grants for tri-aisle or at least do some ditch work and culvert cleaning to aid in some of the drainage issues. If you don't listen to anything I've said, and I know you won't, but remember this, a lie doesn't become the truth, wrong doesn't become right, evil doesn't become good, just because it is accepted by a majority. And you can't buy your way to heaven, but you can find your way to hell. There you go.
I would also ask, when you come up, that you adjust the mic so the mic's not hitting your forehead and I think we can all hear a little bit better.
Oh, I can hear it.
Yes.
My name's Sterling Siampa and I live at 1717 Ashan in Wald Lake. And I would like to read a letter that I posted on social media and I've sent out to the media as well as to the Michigan Attorney General's office. Dear City Council, City Manager, City Attorney and City Clerk, as a voting constituent of the City of Wald Lake, this is a notice of my displeasure with the developments and actions taken by the City Council, City Manager, Clerk and Attorney in the past three years, conspiracy and unsubstantiated charges against former City Councilwoman Sue Halke and her subsequent removal from office by City Council. City Manager's guaranteed salary of $160,000 through the year 2023 with a new city vehicle and gas mileage paid. The city's approval of $171,000 of accrued unused vacation time paid to the City Manager in the 2017-2018 budget. The lack of progress in restoration of the tri-aisle subdivision sewer and roads to mitigate the damage to homes and damaging property values. The City Manager's ongoing proposal to withdraw from the Michigan Trailway Agreement with the State of Michigan, Wicksum and Commerce. The lack of responsiveness to the auditor in the audit of the City Council, City of Wald Lake's budget, not responding to the auditor's questions or concerns. The increase in salary for two city employees of $5,000 each and additional five weeks of vacation, 100% tuition reimbursement. The 5/21/19 City Council announcement to investigate Councilman Gabe Costanzo for questioning the city's passing of a motion to use $579,300 from the DDA funds to resurface Decker Road. This road is well outside of the DDA geographic map per the 2008 DDA plan. The 5/21/19 City Council investigation into Gabe Costanzo with the purpose of removing him from office against the voters' wishes. This is the second attempt to remove a duly-elected City Councilperson from Wald Lake City Council through accusations and conspiracy. The lack of transparency in the Coias versus City of Wald Lake lawsuit with accusations of conspiracy leveled against the City of Wald Lake regarding marijuana licensing. The city filed a lawsuit against the Michigan Association of Public Employees and will incur enormous legal fee.
You're providing yourself, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. As a citizen and taxpayer of Wald Lake, we deserve to have these egregious actions reported to local, state and federal authorities without care of retribution by the City of Wald Lake under the whistleblower protection act and all statutes afforded to us. I ask the state and federal authorities to fully investigate the facts of this letter through a forensic financial audit and any investigative means necessary to bring the truth and government transparency to the City of Wald Lake. Thank you. Just to make sure that all of my letter is captured, I would like to give it to the city clerk. I can leave it here at the podium, but I want to make sure it's captured in the city minute, in the minutes, just in case.
If you're speaking, if you're speaking, and the buzzer goes off, all I ask you is you try to summarize, we'll let you finish what your thought process is, but please try to summarize your statements as soon as you hear it. Yes, the lady in the yellow.
Diane Chrome, 139 Wall Fair Boulevard, Wald Lake, Michigan. I'm here to express my concern about the investigation into Gabe Costanzo related to inappropriate use of the internet and negativity concerning Wald Lake. I have found Gabe to be very positive and capable councilman. His use of the internet, email, texting and coffee with the councilman allow me a little longer, and probably many people, than three-minute dialogues simply to express our concerns about what's going on and issues in the city. For me, he was expressed especially helpful in assisting with my feelings about the bike path and my desire for a bike path. I think it's really important. And he is a neighbor and I'm going to tell you right now, I have never seen he or his beautiful wife Deborah on a bicycle, so it isn't really a concern of his, it was a concern of mine. And what I thought was most interesting is, he really researched it, not just about bike paths and what they can do for southeastern Michigan, but he went up north, he went everywhere there was a bike path to find out what was good about a bike path and what it did for a community. And that I just thought was wonderful. And I just want to say that when you're talking about the aesthetics of our community, that is subjective. And I respect our DDA and I respect their opinions, but I also respect Mr. Costanzo and even myself and our opinions of how we think the city might look. And that is just what a democracy is. To have somebody on a council that doesn't agree with the whole council doesn't mean that they are disrespectful to people who are our neighbors also and our friends, it just is how a democracy works. And even in a city of our size, I think all views should be heard because Mr. Costanzo isn't always coming with his viewpoints, he's coming with our viewpoints. And viewpoints that I know, because I know, I've never even seen him hiking, that he's coming with mine. And what I really feel as I watch these investigations is that we are forgetting who we really are and where we came from. And in the words of Abraham Lincoln, I just want to say that democracy is government of the people, by the people and for the people. And I hope...
Well, orange is red, I'm a little colorblind, I guess.
Tina Thurston, 1344 Delta, I've already written it in. A few things, first of all, in the past we've tried to have a neighborhood block party and I have contacted, I think it was Mr. Ambrose, a few times. What do we need to do to block off part of Delta that will not encroach on people getting through the neighborhood so we can have a safe block party? What do I need to do to get that permission?
Contact the police department.
Okay. All right. Secondly, my neighbors asked me to come tonight to ask, in the letter, Mr. Robertson said the village will be taken care of in the, or you know, go about in the future. What future? This year? Next year? The year after? That's something we'd like answered, maybe at the next council meeting somebody can let us know. And third, I'm not going to go into everything that someone's already said because we all feel this way, we're all wearing red. Mr. Witt called me a tough broad after one of the meetings, not too long ago. He shook my hand and said, "You are one tough broad." And I am. And I won't take that as an insult, but I grilled him when he showed up at my door. In my pajamas and robe, he knocked and I stood there and I grilled him because I've not been happy with this council. I know you can't make us all happy, I know there are things you're going to have to do that some of us will not like and that is fine. But I have come to a few meetings and I'm guilty, I can't make it. I have a special needs kiddo and I don't have a babysitter and a husband that works about 80 hours a week. But I have watched the mayor, I have watched Mr. Ambrose, I have watched Mr. Witt disrespect Councilman Costanzo. Lately and rudely. And I don't care how you feel about him, but as a member of this community, I'm disgusted and I'm shocked that you can't hide the disdain or the disrespect. I don't have to tell you that I don't support this investigation, I don't think Mr. Witt should be in charge of this. And also, the allegations aren't quite clear to us what he's being investigated about and I do feel we have the right to know that. He has said he doesn't agree with the DDA using it outside the parameters. What's wrong with that? We feel the same way, we'd like a nicer downtown and we would like one without a pot shop next to by our beach.
Amen.
What has he done? We would like to know and we have a right to know as people who have voted you in and out what the allegations are. And he has done something incorrect. I've seen it with Susan. If he's done something incorrect, then he needs to be brought out, censure him, publicly shame him in front of us and say, "You've done this, this and this and this is outside your scope of what you're allowed to do." It's just not okay. And there's an election coming up in November and I think we will, our voices will be heard. Thank you.
Yes.
Do you want to go up there?
Yep.
Okay.
We prefer that so we can hear you.
I'm obviously a mother, I have three children, so she needs to be up here, but. My name is Lori Matheson, I live at 1152 South Eddy. I'm going to call him Gabe because I feel like he's become my friend since coming to my home when he, I believe it was 2016 if I'm right, when he ran for council. I have, I go to all the events, I went to Wald Lake schools, I have lived here maybe longer than all of you, I don't know. I've lived here a very long time, my dad grew up here, my dad went to Wald Lake High School. I feel like I represent probably a little more history than others. So what I would like to say is, I support Gabe, he is at every event, he talks to my kids, he listens to me, he understands that this town used to be amazing. People used to come from all over to go to the, you know, the amusement park, the casino, the dance hall, now we have pot shops. I don't want my kids around that. My kids go to the schools, we don't have a community center, we don't have a community pool, we don't have things around here. I go to the concerts in the park which are wonderful, but guess who's not there? You are. No one is there except for Gabe. So when I read in the final column that Gabe's being investigated, I am a voter and I just wonder, why is this person being investigated when he is the most active one out there of all of you? I, you know, I voted for some of you, but I am looking into all of you, I represent the moms, I'm in the school, I'm in the PTA, I am everywhere and I would like to see massive changes. Even the, how this construction was done, I can't get to the library with my daughter without parking over here for storytime and I talk to the librarians. I'm like, what happened to the parking lot? They're like, the council. So I feel like there needs to be a lot more transparency, you need to understand that there are a lot of citizens in here that are very upset, that have young families, pay our taxes and we are watching you. You need to lay off of Gabe and start thinking about what are you doing for this town? What are you doing? What are you doing to make it better? What are you doing to make it better for my three kids? What are you doing? That's what I'd like to know. Honestly, I would love an answer from all of you because I feel like there is none. And then how embarrassing that our city is a city that's like, oh, the airline trail, let's stop it in Wald Lake, you know, let's do it in commerce, they have a great bridge and then over there, nobody, Wicksum, whatever, go ahead, but then Wald Lake, you know, come on. It's just, from my point of view, it's just ridiculous. It's ridiculous. So I support Gabe, I will fight with Gabe, I will go for battle with Gabe, I'll go to court with Gabe, but all of you should really start thinking, who's watching? Because it's me and it's the moms and we're watching you, okay?
Yeah.
Good job.
I love you.
I already signed in. Okay, my name is Rick Greenwell, I live at 395 West Wald Lake Drive and I have some concerns. The following facts can be found on the Oakland County website, social media and newspaper articles. What was the purpose of them? Why did Mr. Castanza have an additional microphone hooked up to his mic? And who paid for these services? Concern number three, found pictures on the internet showing a Wall Lake chipping crew doing work down in Casey's, and that's private business. And I don't believe we do chipping for private businesses, we do it for residents only. I think this is a serious conflict of interest, or at least a serious ethics violation. And that should be looked into.
Investigated, yeah, that's right.
My fourth concern are the lawsuits. What is going on? How many lawsuits do we got? I found three so far, and I have some information on that. The first lawsuit has charges of fraudulent misrepresentation and silent fraud. The plaintiff is Coias, the defendants are the city of Wall Lake, Mayor Ackley, and City Manager Witt, and others. The second lawsuit has charges of injunction relief and defamation, and the plaintiffs in that case are Eric Jones, Fleming, Yatuma, and Burowitz, and Coias. The defendants in that case are the city of Wall Lake and City Manager Witt. They're seeking over a billion dollars in damages on that one. These lawsuits could financially ruin this city. And I have not heard that much information from this board in any of your meetings, but it's out there, it's public knowledge. The third lawsuit involves City Manager Witt suing the union on the city's behalf over a couple of smaller amount grievances. This should easily have been handled in-house, I don't know why it wasn't, now it's becoming a big deal, apparently. My fifth concern is that our city charter requires that the city manager has to reside in the city. I understand that the state laws say otherwise, however, I do believe that our bylaws should be upheld, as they have in other matters. The lack of salary benefits that he receives from the city of Wall Lake, and his decision not to live here, seems to indicate clearly to me that he has no vested interest in our city. And I think that's a shame. Last meeting, well, I'll just say this, you have to be honest here, I think we're investigating the wrong people on council.
Okay, is there anyone else? Lady in gray on the left? Yep.
I have young kids at home, so I do watch whoever's filming.
Could you give us your name and address?
I'm sorry, Jennifer Mace, I'm 919 Loveton.
Thank you.
Okay. So what I understood about the Gabe thing is that he disagrees with the DDA, and he wants the money to go to the Tri-A sub instead of Decker, which personally, I don't agree with it, but I don't think it should go to Decker either. I want it to go to downtown. I want this to be developed, I want, you know, a community center would be great, a pool, something for, to bring in young families, and to bring your investment. We need to get these vacant properties developed, I think the DDA should be spending their money and their time and their efforts on developing that, bringing somebody in, doing something about that. The school property, the Papino's property, that is where we have opportunity. And this is gonna bring people into the city. Okay, I have a lot of stuff, so... The DDA, you know, I'm not sure what he said, but what I understood, it was just that he doesn't agree with them, and he's stated on media, and if this is, I mean, I believe somebody said he was demonizing them, I mean, I mean, really? Like, that's kinda, I don't know. So, I think that if this is, they shouldn't be wasting the city manager's time, too. If this is proven that he just stated his opinion, and this is, you know, if it is against the council, then that's fine. But, you know, the city manager has better things to do than to investigate, you know...
No.
Okay. I also, I got involved because of the Trailway Council, and so I am requesting that you decide on this. I feel like this has been ridiculous, they're paving it, and you're gonna, you're still deciding whether you wanna be in it or not. The reason you said that you didn't wanna be in it was because these other cities, they have more taxes coming in, and we have a bigger portion, but it isn't our city. If I have, if my neighbor makes more money than me, I'm not gonna ask him to, you know, mow my lawn, or build a, you know, build a fence. We're not gonna pay for Commerce's bridge when they need repairs. I mean, so I'm not sure what that is, and I hope about the train station, I hope we jumped on that, that, I think it was, somebody offered to refurbish it. I mean, I hope, that's what's best for the city. You might not like it, or I'm not sure what you would have a problem with it, but, you know, we need to jump on that, and that will save the city a lot of money. They also said, about, going back to the DDA, somebody stated that they have college degrees, sorry, I'll wrap it up, they have college degrees, so they know what they're talking about. I mean, I just, you know, that is not always true, I'll just say that. Okay, and, yeah, I guess I just like, you know, a little bit better in the city, and I wanna move forward. Thank you.
Lady, I couldn't see her from that.
My name is Marilyn Boylan, I'm at 761...
Could you pull the mic down?
This is 761 Wall Lake.
Would you say your name was?
Marilyn Boylan.
Thank you.
I felt like I had to get up, I know that there are many, many people here who are in support of Gabe. I moved here in 2011, so we're not old-time people, but I have started to try and get to the council meetings, and I've been to about four of them in the last year. I have watched, and I have to agree, that I have been shocked at some of the treatment of Gabe. Sarcasm and stuff like that, there's no place for that, it's just not professional. I did bring up one time before that my feeling is, and I don't know about other people talking here, my feeling is that I've got all these faces looking at me, I'm talking, and nobody's saying anything. And I realize this is your policy, but it didn't used to be that way. Okay? So, we come up, we say something, and obviously, it hasn't been very positive tonight, however, later on in the session, you're gonna be talking about other things, and we have no chance to say anything. We can't voice our opinion. I don't feel that that's a democracy. I feel that you need to have feedback. I mean, I go with my family, and I say, "Okay, let's all get together and put our heads together and try to solve a problem." And I feel that you guys are, you're trying to do this yourself, I don't know, you're trying to do it your own way, or what, but the more heads you have, the more input you have, it's better for everybody. So it's not all thrown on your shoulders, it could be somebody out here who maybe doesn't have a degree, but somebody out here maybe has some idea, and all of a sudden, "Whoa, I didn't think about that." That would be great for the city. So, good luck, Gabe, I respect the heck out of you.
Oh, we do have one more.
My name is Marilyn Brokop, I live at 260 Gamma, and I just wanna talk about what's going on in Tri-A right now. They are digging these holes now, they're not, they're not putting anything around for, to...
Protection.
Any protection around the holes. Well, the children are out of school right now, and they can fall, and I have videos of, I took videos of the holes, that you can see it, if you'd like, need to show it to you. I can show you, Casey was there, he saw them, Mr. Witt was there yesterday, he saw the holes, so, I mean, you saw them.
Seven o'clock last night.
There's no...
The council member and I were...
It's not protected. You want me to show it to you? I mean, I showed it to a lot of the people.
Well, it must have been a different one than I was looking at.
You can see it, they're on Delta, and they're not, you can see there's no protection in, you're...
For three minutes. You're not supposed to be answering her, it's her three minutes. You still got time?
I'm done.
Are you finished?
No, no, I'm just saying, I was...
No, she's right, she's right.
It was seven o'clock last night, we spoke...
It was ten to seven.
It was what?
It was ten to seven.
The other night, we were out there, Casey Ambrose, the DDA chairman, was checking Tri-A, so was I, he was going a different way, we met up, there were issues that she brought up that are real, and we're dealing with that. We are contractors, so we're out there every day, so it was last night.
Well, I'm out there every day, too, and I'm gonna be taking pictures every single day.
And that's good, but she's right on some of that, not everything was dangerous, but it is, you know, she's right about that.
I'd like to hear Marilyn speak.
'Cause I walk every day, and the logs are tore up, and everything is...
I'm gonna give a little report later, if you're still around here, about the Tri-A thing, and where we are on it, and the issues we've got, that was gonna be one of them.
Is there anyone else? Okay, I didn't see anyone, so let's close the audience participation, and we'll go to Councilwoman. Does anyone have a report that they'd like to give tonight?
I do, Madam Mayor. Last week, I attended the Michigan Airlines Trailway Council meeting, it was another very productive meeting, everybody has seen the development of the trail, they're pretty big, right now they're in the process of doing the fine grading, and the picking's gonna start in early July, so very good progress on that. Our account is our another $10,000 in interest income to our account, so that's another very positive. There has been reports of vehicles using the trail, which is very concerning, I was discussing, because with the fine grading, it could damage it and delay the project, so it's something we need to watch out for, and if anybody sees it, to call the authorities and let them know that the trail is being used by vehicles.
Is there anyone else?
In addition to that, on the actual trail, two both parties from the neighboring communities are waiting to get approval from their councils in regards to the agreement, okay? And the agreement is that, not that Wall Lake is pulling out, it's what they're gonna do, is they're gonna split the responsibilities equally amongst all three, so, say for instance, when the depot gets done, Wall Lake is not on the hook for the hundred percent of the depot, it will be funded to the other community, so that's what they're trying to get rectified as far as what was an irrational agreement, okay? So, that was that part of it, so, it is moving along, and they're gonna get back to us, they apologize that it's taken them so long to get approval from their councils, but they're coming back with it. Right, Gabe?
Yeah.
That's what they're saying, they wanna get it done, too. Because we have, we have a group that's interested in doing the depot, so it's looking very favorable, we have another group that's looking at actually dismantling the old portion, which nothing can be done with anyways, and moving it to a historic site where they have other depots. And we have some local businesses that are interested in doing an actual build-out replica of the old depot, all done in modern times, so that's that. Okay, also, too, we had the lake board meeting this week, that was on June 11th, one of the big issues over there was the discussion of a portable wash station. This was brought to us by Commissioner, oh, what mark, okay? The county has dollars available for these wash stations, portable wash stations, but the caveat is, in order to get a portable wash station, we need a public access. Well, that got a few people's attention, you know, nobody wants this public access on Wall Lake, even though lakes are all considered owned by the public, or being able to be used by the public, okay? So, one of the discussions that came up, too, was, when we have these events on the lake, say for instance, just that Saturday before that, we had the bass tournament, well, I received several phone calls, as did others, we spent all this money and time and treatment of the lake to take care of these invasion species that are entering from other lakes, and here we allow twenty, thirty bass boats to come on, who's to say that they cleaned their ballast, or took all their weeds off? So, maybe we can have conversation with our neighboring community, Novi over here, have these portable wash stations at each one of the fire halls or something, have these boats treated before they go into our lake. So, it's a good thought, I mean, that way the water can be pumped out of there and into the municipal drainage system, it's not getting into the lake, 'cause we know all our drains around here lead to the lake anyway, so, that was pretty much that discussion, so if you hear anything out there, know there's no public access is going on to Wall Lake. That was part of the conversation, and she understood that that was a very touchy subject, so.
That was it?
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I would just like to add, I know this is council reports, and mine is later, but while the audience is here, to add to Casey's comments about the trail. When we first said we were going to try and pull out of the trail a couple years ago, it was never to actually pull out and completing the trail, it was to pull out of the Trailway Council. We thought that brought their attention to the fact that Wall Lake was paying much more than their share, and we tried to work with them, and we got nowhere. So, we finally said again, that you either have to cooperate and write a new agreement, or we're out of the trail. We'll finish the trail at Wall Lake, so it wasn't going to go through Wixom, stop in Wall Lake, and start again in Commerce, so that is misinformation. Wall Lake was never not going to finish the trail. I'm hoping this new agreement will be much fairer, it will protect the people of Wall Lake, and that's what our intention is. But until the other two communities agree to it, we're gonna have to keep postponing the...
Mayor, because that's part of my report, it's timely now, and I'm gonna give a response on the trail issues, not only because there was a meeting, but to clarify some issues. City Council, never in the nine years I've been here, declared they were getting out of the trail. I started, nine years ago, when they were just beginning, the emphasis on who got the money shifted, all to Commerce, County Commerce. They started making decisions without our vote, contrary to the council vote, the councils that I attended and voted, they make decisions that cut people out, the money got shifted, the money that was spent on the six million dollar bridge, about, some of that money was supposed to do, originally thought it was going to apply to the depot, that money all got shifted over there because of the votes in the council. That's the argument that we had, it was an unfair agreement, there was never an agreement to get out of the trail and not have a trail, it was because the other two communities were being unfair. They were gonna leave Wall Lake with the undeveloped depot, which would have been half a million or more, perpetual maintenance on the trail. That was gonna cost you thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars. The money that was spent on the Cadillac version of the bridge, was originally, some of that money was to go to fix the depot. It all got shifted because of the politics. Politics won, you got a really nice bridge to look at, and it's got that big Commerce seal on it. You're still on the hook as a taxpayer for what goes on over here at the depot, it costs half a million dollars to do it, and perpetual maintenance, you're on the hook as a taxpayer. I fought for it, that's what I was fighting for, that's what the council was doing, we're in negotiations with them, the reason they came to the table and said they were willing to put together a fair agreements, because I was right then, and I've been right now. They did save some money, the price was ridiculous, what you were gonna have to pay for that, and where the money went away to Commerce, the township of Commerce. Wixom came out of it with a sweet deal, because they got some property down there that they could develop themselves. Wall Lake taxpayers were on the hook for a lot... Wall Lake taxpayers were on the hook for a lot more than you've been told, they were never gonna stop the trail, they were simply looking to fair agreement. The, the idea that you've been told that there was millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars donated to Wall Lake Trail, that's simply not true.
Show us.
Okay.
There was money dedicated to the trail and none of it was spent here, none of it was spent to fix the depot, you're still on the hook until we get that deal. Council's doing the right thing, they're holding their feet in the fire, if we get the deal, they did the right thing. So, that's the update, um, I, you know, if we get a deal, we get a deal, if we don't, it's still a good idea not to let Commerce Township make you pay, cause that's exactly what we've done so far in the last nine years. You were paid for Commerce's development.
We can get a deal.
That's all on that one, I do have another.
Okay. We're gonna do your report now.
All right, uh, I would ask you, the city council, you're receiving filed the Department of Divisional Statistical Report.
Have a motion, please.
Uh-huh.
Support, support. Is there any questions of the statistical reports?
I have one question, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
On page forty-five of the council packet, there's a line for $620, it says reimbursement for, and it's blank, what would this be reimbursement for?
Blank, fill in the blank.
I think you're referring to, uh, the Vennel Lublin reimbursement.
The Vennel Chairs.
Those are the Adirondack Chairs.
Chairs.
And also, uh, I collected some money from some businesses that, uh, paid the Wall Lake teachers, the art teachers, in, uh, reimbursement for their supplies, so it's all that we got.
They were not paid, but they were reimbursed, what that means is the council would fund his money, use his resources to help the city, we reimburse.
It was just blank, I didn't know what the reimbursement was.
Fair enough. Any other questions?
You could have asked me.
He, he has to do now.
Trail Council, I think.
Excuse me, I can't hear the mayor with everybody else talking.
The mayor?
The mayor?
I meant the city manager, but please, Dennis, please finish, give him the respect that we've given to him.
The council thing is still on the agenda, you gotta table it one more time to give them time to bring it back. Uh, if you remember, when we had the meeting over there, it was Dennis Witt that stood up and said, "Don't get out of the trail," you know, because I thought we could work with the trail with two new groups, one or two of them, but the previous group, it was all about spending money for Commerce, all of the money's under Commerce, and if they don't cut the deal, then you need to come, you need to, you, you need to protect your taxpayers and get out of the trail, we can run the trail, we can do everything there cheaper than doing it with perpetual maintenance that we're paying for all of your trails, so, you do a better job and give them one more time, if they really are at the table, like, uh, like people are saying, you guys have been doing that part, uh, I, I don't have a good relationship with that crew over there, the Donner over there.
Are they gonna maintain it if they get rid of DPW?
He called everybody here, Wall Lake taxpayers.
Good point.
Is he gonna get out there and sweep it?
So, that moves ahead, but we need to table that tonight, when you get there, you don't need to act on that, but that's my opinion, it's the same as it was when they, when we were gonna kill it that first night. The next thing, triage, one second, clarification, not get out of the trail, get out of the trail council. No, we need a trail. Of course a trail, but you mentioned.
It's the agreement, how things are being paid, or that's what.
The trail, you're paying administration, you're paying the whole damn sweep, but it's not, it's, it's, it's costing the taxpayers of Wall Lake a lot more money than it pays them, and, and that's to the benefit of the other two communities, they know that, that's why they were really dropping the price, they know, so.
Okay, it's great, no.
I got the next thing I wanted to mention, the young lady was out there somewhere, she was right, she was out there looking around, taking photos, uh, videos, whatever, she was, I mean, I think she hit every side, because I was out there too, and so, she's right, the contractor's been alerted that they need to pay a little more attention to, to what they're doing, uh, it didn't look like it was an immediate threat, but if you don't keep control of the holes and put the fencing in, the light tech, but she had, she was out there, she was, was right about that.
But then, we're talking kids, so, I mean, you know, you can put your arms bent, you know, they still crawling, either they wanna look over the hole, so.
The park is closed, the park is closed, we got, the best we can do is sign, we got the signs up, the park is closed, all of the, uh, the tubing and the, the pikes, as you call them, the culverts, whatever, mostly the fire hydrants, that's the, the ones you can notify the, I mean, you can see those, uh, brand new fire hydrants over, probably stayed in the park, uh, it's amazing the process, they're, they're not digging up everything the way they do, they bore, maybe you can see, so, that's full going, we're gonna have some inconvenience, some of you folks, if you live in the, in the sub, you're gonna have inconvenience, uh, and so you go through who's out there or you call City Hall, and we will make sure that we try to remedy whatever inconvenience it is. The, the contractors are really good in terms of responding to that and accommodating the residents, but they know that, that, that they shouldn't be inconvenienced to us, so, we look for that project to go probably, how about this, that's the middle of July? If, if we're lucky and the weather's good, this could go for a while, that's gonna be, that, there's no tax increases for there, to answer the other question, uh, that had to do with what was already passed in terms of recovery and foster that on the underwater bills, uh, the, next question would be, is when we decide if we're do, how are we gonna do the road, we're looking for funding there, any federal funding, or go through the state, it comes through the county, we're always looking for that, and that's not likely, but because everybody believes this, you have to keep looking, so, you never know, we might get a gift, but, uh, that's the next thing up, and that's our next agenda, the triage committee spoke loudly, and that's why we moved on the public safety issue, we, we are, I don't look for any kind of proposal to do anything over there until we get that other thing done and see what resources available, uh, with the new, uh, with the new budget here, so, um, I think that's it in terms of.
Okay. Not for any force language. Attorney report, Dan?
I have two items to report on, uh, in a closed session, uh, if we have anything to report on during the open session.
Okay, so both of these items are for executive session?
Correct.
Okay, can I have a motion on the first one? On the, uh, planned unit development, you want that in executive session as well, you said?
Uh, yes, it concerns, uh, contractual terms.
Okay, I need a motion for executive session.
I'll make that.
Support? Roll call, please.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Again, that's a, a vote for executive session.
Well, I just wanna know under what the Open Meeting Act, what exactly, what part of the Open Meeting Act are we citing as the reason for executive session? I didn't hear it cited to go in a closed session, but what section of the Open Meeting Act are we going under?
Van?
It would, it would be to discuss a confidential attorney-client communication, I concluded a rather lengthy, uh, legal review and recommendation concerning the, uh, the proposal regarding the development agreement, so it would be to discuss a confidential attorney-client communication.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
Osneck, Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Stanzo?
No.
Locke?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Motion carried. Second, is a confidential attorney-client communication on the Colias versus City of Wall Lake lawsuit, motion for executive session? Support?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Osneck, Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Stanzo?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Unfinished business, uh, the resolution to withdraw from the Commerce Wall Lake-Wixom Trailway Management Council, we've already heard from our city manager, we had a motion to table this.
Motion to lay it over.
Again for, till the next council meeting.
Yes.
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I, I'd like to have something to discuss, before we vote on it, um, we're in the process of developing the trail right now, withdrawing from the trail right now will be premature, as we have funds that we certified with Wixom that could jeopardize the, the grants that have been approved from the TAP grants, that could create problems withdrawing before the trail construction is completed, um, I move to amend the motion, table it indefinitely, we can always bring this back up as a new motion after the trail is developed, but I move to table indefinitely, move to amend the motion and table indefinitely.
Is there support for that motion? Motion dies for lack of support. Any other questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Stanzo?
No.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next unfinished item is the second reading of three forty-five dash nineteen, the amendment to chapter eighty-six vegetation.
Well, I said we table that until the next council meeting, I have received information that we can develop, is that a motion?
Is there support for that? Roll call, please.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Stanzo?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Moving into new business, we have the proposed resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty-three on the link of water sewer and refuge receivables, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
Any discussion on the motion? Administration have any comments? Okay, roll call.
Stanzo?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Next item is the proposed resolution two thousand nineteen thirty-four on delinquent property tax for affidavit, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there support? Any questions or comments from, of staff? Roll call, please.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Stanzo?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Next item is the proposed resolution two thousand nineteen thirty-five adopting pavement warranty program, I believe that was handed out, we've got the resolution, we have a memo on it tonight, is there a motion to approve, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution, the city council, the city of Wall Lake to adopt the pavement warranty program, that being proposed resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty-five.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, are there any questions, any concerns?
Maybe we could have, let our people give us just a little synopsis of what, what this means so that our residents would understand.
Yeah, what it is, is this is, uh, this originated from, um, a recent advisory bulletin from the Michigan Municipal League, recommending that all local road agencies, including cities that own the Michigan local agency, uh, pavement warranty program, uh, the program is a statewide accepted format for implementing pavement warranties on road projects utilizing state or federal funding, that include two million dollars or more in pavement-related, uh, components, what are commonly referred to as, as threshold projects, so, if the city is doing one of these threshold projects that involves, um, state and federal funding and are more than two million dollars, include more than two million dollars of pavement improvements, these resident, there's, actually, there's another resolution that goes with it, these two companion resolutions would give the city the discretionary authority to, uh, to require a pavement warranty, uh, on that project, uh, from the contractor. Uh, it is something that, uh, as, as I indicated, is, is recommended by the Michigan Municipal League, uh, there is, uh, there is flexibility within the program, you don't necessarily have to require a pavement warranty on every single threshold project, but it does give the city the flexibility and the authority to require a pavement warranty on the threshold projects when the city determines that it would be in the city's best interest to do so, uh, and it also, it also helps avoid any potential penalties that could, uh, you know, if the city chose not to do this, there, you know, an argument could be made that, uh, you know, that there might be some, some type of penalty that, that is warranted under state law that, that could potentially jeopardize, uh, the city's receipt of, uh, state highway funds, so, so it is recommended that, that, that the city can go ahead and, and adopt this state, um, pavement warranty program.
Okay, thank you. Does that bring up any questions, any concerns? Okay, roll call, please.
Lublin?
Yes.
Yeah, excuse me, Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Stanzo?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number four, resolution two thousand nineteen thirty-six implementing, oops, I'm sorry, yeah, implementing pavement warranty program, it is the right one. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Support? Okay, we have a motion support, any comments on this one? Roll call, please.
Osneck?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Stanzo?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
The next one is the proposed resolution two thousand nineteen thirty-seven, intergovernmental lockup services agreement with the city of Wixom, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the resolution, uh, to authorize an agreement between the city of Wall Lake and the city of Wixom to authorize our city manager to execute the interlocal agreement for lockup services, proposed resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty-seven.
Is there support?
I'll support that.
Okay.
Mayor, why don't we let the, let the chief, you know, break, uh, we do what that means, it means more than just lock the people up.
We've had an agreement with Wixom since, uh, two thousand nine, uh, they are the closest, uh, twenty-four seven lockup to us, most convenient, um, the, the current agreement we're operating under is from two thousand eleven, um, Wixom has held the rate of seventy-five dollars per day per prisoner since two thousand eleven, so, we've seen a slight increase, uh, eighty-two fifty per day the first year, and, uh, like eighty-five and eighty-seven fifty, uh, for the third year, so, they, uh, still pretty humble, and, uh, they lodge about a hundred or just under a hundred people a year, it's a great agreement, and Wixom have been great partners, so it asks for a three munis agreement.
And otherwise, we'd be transferring to a county.
Our officers are usually on the pine.
Saves quite a lot of time, and expense on that account. Okay, does, uh, council have any further questions on the chief, we also, okay, roll call, both, please.
Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Stanzo?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Okay, um, the next item is item number six, requested discussion on the discussion of the field.
Yes.
Where the farmer's market is held.
So, earlier this year, I, uh, the January council meeting, I brought up the, uh, the field next to us, uh, last year we appropriated funds to do the cleanup, restoration and redevelopment of this property, we spent over a million dollars for that property, and even more for the restoration and cleanups, um, we basically have an under, we have a, these are property that's extremely underutilized, it's an asset to the city that we really need to consider getting back under the tax rolls, we could easily move the farmer's market to another location, it will take quite a while to sell, um, I'd like to make a motion that I move under, I move at the city under section two point one, paragraph B of the city charter, to have this property appraised and sub, and subsequently, a request for bids on the sale of the property be posted, upon the sale of the property, all proceeds will be put aside from a general fund and dedicated strictly for use in the triage, infrastructure, road repairs and upgrades, I think we could spend that money and help the residents out in the neighborhood.
Is there support for that?[1745.32] Is there support for that?
Nobody? Nobody?
My reason, of course, I can't support your motion, but I would rather see discussion, I would rather see what use this piece of property could be put through, put to use once the airline trail opens. I have ideas in my head how we can use it. I think we need discussion before we actually agree to put this piece of property up for sale.
I think if someone seconds my motion, we could have a discussion.
Yeah.
We could have a discussion if we have someone that.
I think we need a separate study session to decide, not sit here tonight, and decide whether we're gonna sell a piece of property that we passed with 20 some years. We need to get the public's opinion what it might be used for, and the other council's opinion what it might be used for. Maybe the best bet is to sell it. But I don't think we need to make a decision tonight to sell a piece of property.
I've moved to amend my motion then, to put together a study, I don't want to say committee, but a study session to research what we could develop this property for, I prefer to be sell it, but to study to get the public input on this piece of property. I think it's extremely underutilized, if I'm at home, we could, if I have something laying around, I want to earn extra money for my home, and I need the money, I sell what I don't need, and I think we should be dealing with this property. So, I move, I move to put together a committee, move to amend my motion, to put a committee together, a study.
If I can help you out here a little bit?
Please.
Who do you want on the committee as far as people? Do you want a mixture of council? Usually, the mayor appoints a committee. Do you want a mixture of council and residents?
I would, I would say council and residents, a mixture of council and residents.
So, you're talking maybe three council, two residents, to keep it at a?
I'd say five, even, or I don't.
Attorney have reported?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Whoa.
With an appointment? Contact a few people, see if they want to be on it. Okay, roll call, please. Guess I'm telling myself I can't do it to everybody.
Yes.
Stanzo?
Yes.
Laug?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck? Robertson?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Okay, council town votes. Mr. Robertson?
You got nothing to say?
Nothing to say. Mr. Kozan.
I want to thank the Michael Lean Foundation and the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation for their generous donations to the Michigan Airline Trailway Project, between Phase 1 and Phase 2, it's over 2.1 million dollars. I also want to thank the residents who showed up today to support the many kind words that were said, and the many others who were unable to make it this evening, but offered kind words of encouragement. It was truly humbling, and I thank you for that. I may not be as eloquent as some would like at times, but one thing is certain, I will always listen, will strive to be a better councilman to whom I serve and who elect me, you people in front of me.
Support.
We'll give you a couple of things over here. I hear this thing about tree chipping thrown around around here, okay? I'd be happy to discuss with anybody, but if anybody would like to tell me, what trees did they chip? I have no trees on my property, okay? So, I'd be, I'd like to know that, so I could, then I could really address the questions more, okay? But anytime, I won't waste everybody's time. Also, too, you know, as we go through this, and as the situation occurred over here with Gabe, unfortunately, you know, I guess hindsight always be in 2020, it would have been nice to have a social media policy, like a lot of other communities have, that addresses what can be put on social media by our staff, our employees, our department heads, and our council members, and maybe we wouldn't be in this situation, okay, so.
But he just brought us up to speed.
We'll get it all straightened out. Nobody's going anywhere, nobody's removing everybody out, stop the rumors, okay, so that's it. I just, we've done everything. There's investigation. There's nothing anybody ever wants. No fraud. There's investigation. You know, here's almost the same way, too, so.
Okay. Thanks for the presentation.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and most importantly, I really, really hope it doesn't rain Saturday for our beach party, and I hope that I see everyone there.
Supposed to.
I'd like to say that there's been a lot of positives done in the last eight years. I know this group is not seeing if any of those things. I was stopped by a library employee who said that she's thrilled that Decker Road is on target for fixing up and the proposed development, and she lives right near the potential possibility of the condos, and she was happy to see that we're trying to do what's best for the whole city. So, I think that a lot has been done that's been positive, and I'm proud of the work that's been done.
Thank you. Is that all you have?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, to the mayor's report, I have a, one place here, and I'm sorry, but I left my packet in the car, and I'm working from John, and I'm trying to have everything together here. I am nominating Margaret Schwartz to fill the vacancy on the election commission. This is at the recommendation of our city clerk, and knowing Mrs. Schwartz, I think it's a very good recommendation, so I would ask that you approve the resolution that's in your packet of making this appointment for an unsecured term in February 1st of 2020. Do I have a motion, please?
I'm not motion. Support. All right, go ahead, though.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Stanzo?
Yes.
Laug?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osneck? Robertson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
I too think we have done a lot of things tonight, a lot of positive ideas have come out, a lot of ideas that the president has presented to the council. I hope we can look forward. I hope to see everyone at some point in time during our beach party and the fireworks. I was aware that the mayor's gonna say it's not gonna rain, but I didn't do too good of a job for the Easter egg hunt, so. Well, I'm not gonna make that comment tonight, I guess if it rains, it rains, but let's hope that it doesn't rain hard enough. Last year, it rained in the morning, and then the day became nice. There's been a lot of work, we have a lot of volunteers and city staff, and I think it'll be a fun day for everybody. Last year, it turned out to be really family day, and I think it's going to be again this year, so I hope to see everyone there. And at that, do I have a motion to approve? Oh, recess, excuse me.
I make the motion.
Support. You're not gonna let it?
Nope.
Chelsea.
Questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm okay now, it's a good start.
Yes, I do, absolutely. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, I do, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
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 Neither have we.
Neither have we.
Yeah.
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 That's a great use of our cash, Alan, right?
Yeah.[1523.12]